Okay, folks, we're going to go ahead and get started with our business meeting. Today's date is April 15th, 2025. The time is 2:00 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Everline, Duncan, and Matari. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we begin with a moment of silence. Okay, next up is the pledge. Jeff, could I get you to lead us on that, please?
My pledge is to comply with the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? I was told that we wanted to pull item seven and just fix a typo. Anything else? Okay. Public comment. No? All right. I'll take a motion on the meeting minutes.
I move that we approve items one through six.
Second.
Commissioner Everline? Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. And consent calendar?
I move that we approve items eight through 12.
Second.
Commissioner Everline? Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. And the payables?
I move that we approve the payables for the week of April 7th through 11th, 2025, in the amount of $1,201,255.47, and there are jury panel payments in the amount of $2,470.12.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Okay. Our first business item, number 14. This is an independent contractor agreement. It's a fencing project with JB Fencing, Inc., Parks and Waterways, and it's an action item. And Director Nick Snyder, are you on the phone?
I am. Thank you, Commissioners. Nick Snyder for the record. Before you is a contract in the amount of $6,500 with JB Fencing, which is necessary to install a security fence between the airport and Parks and Waterways' recently acquired property line. And legal has prepared the contract for you, and funding is available in our current budget.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the independent contractor agreement for the fencing project with JB Fencing, Inc., and Parks and Waterways.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 15. It is a memorandum of understanding between Cootney County and Idaho Military Division Network Services with Idaho Military Division and 911. And we have Colin McRoy. You on the phone?
Yes, Commissioners. Good afternoon. Colin McRoy, County Sheriff's Office, 911. For your approval before you is our MOU with Idaho Military Division for network services on their microwave backbone down to Meridian, which is utilized for the radio system connection to the core. This MOU is a renewal, but a new MOU as in the last, during the last cycle, we transitioned from T1 connections to Ethernet connections. So we did a rewrite of the MOU to correctly reflect the services we are utilizing and cost for those. This is a budgeted FY '25 cost to the E911 fund, and our cost total this year is $28,800.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Cootney County and the Idaho Military Division Network Services and our 911.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 16, interim events license. This is for the May 20, 2025 consolidated election polling location at the fairgrounds with Cootney County and our Elections Department, and Asa Gray.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Asa Gray for the record. Before you today is an interim events license for the Elections Department to utilize the Jaclyn Building at the Cootney County Fairgrounds for a polling location for the May 20th consolidated election. I did want to clarify one thing from what I submitted in your packet as the kind of the information for the cover sheet. I was able to confirm with the fairgrounds that it will just be the $500 building rental fee. They will be providing the tables and chairs in the room. We'll be setting them up, so we won't have an extra charge for the use of those. So I just wanted to clarify that because I know it wasn't necessarily clear in there.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the interim events license for the May 20th, 2025 consolidated election polling location at the fairgrounds.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 17. This is a board approval request with Waterways Recreational Boating Safety Grant. It's an agreement with the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation and our Sheriff's Office. And Sergeant Ryan Miller, are you on the phone?
I thought he was out of town this morning.
All right. Well, maybe, is there anyone from the Sheriff's Office that would want to talk about this?
We can skip.
Yeah, we can push this back to the end of the meeting.
And the same one as number 18, too.
So we'll go to item 19. This is a board approval request for the fairgrounds interim event license with the Jaclyn Building, KCSO Annual Employee Award Ceremony with the Sheriff's Office, and I have Lisa Roberts.
Hello. This is Lisa Roberts. Yeah, we're pretty much just requesting that the BSCC approved the fairgrounds event license for the use of the Jaclyn Building for our annual KCSO Awards banquet ceremony.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the fairgrounds event license for the Jaclyn Building and KCSO's annual employee award ceremony.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 20. This is a board approval request from, for a candlelight facility and parking lot lease agreement, terms and conditions with the KCSO Town Hall, the Sheriff's Office, and of Lisa Roberts again.
Lisa Roberts again. I am requesting the BSCC approve the candlelight facility and parking lot lease agreement for the use of an upcoming event that we'll have that we would like to host at Candlelight.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the candlelight facility and parking lot lease agreement for KCSO's Town Hall.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Did Sergeant Ryan Miller, did you join us?
Yes, sir. I apologize for that. I'm here.
All right. No worries. We'll go to item 17. It's a board approval request, Waterways Recreational Boating Safety Grant. It's an agreement with Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation and the Sheriff's Office, and why don't you go ahead and you can explain that to us, please?
Yes, Commissioners, again, the RBS grant. This is how we get half of our funding for the marine program each year. It's Coast Guard funds that is given to the state and then divvied up based off of performance of registered boaters for the county and global acres. So this year, very similar to the numbers that we had last year, it's about $146,000, and we would have to put up a valid half of that in, or exactly half of that in a match which we are funded enough to, not to look out.
All right. You got a little bit of wind in the background, but I think we all caught that.
Sorry about that.
Any questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the recreational boating safety grant agreement with Idaho Department of Parks and Rec.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is item 18, board approval request, off-highway vehicle funds, in the Sheriff's Office. Sergeant Ryan Miller again.
Yes, Commissioners, again, Sergeant Ryan Miller for the record. This is kind of a newer process for this year for the OHV grants. Generally, they just send us a check, and that's based off the registration designators for the county. We're on a two-year registration, so last year we received about $14,000. That's a dollar per registered off-highway vehicles. And the year before that, we received about $24,000. So this year, we received $20,000, so we're kind of, you know, in the middle there. In addition, it was, here's where the new part comes in, for the performance, so citations, inspections, and classes that we held, hold throughout the county, through the, throughout the year, involving and regarding OHVs, we also get a performance base. And I don't know exactly what the breakdown is. There's a formula that IDPR has come up with. So we received about $30,000 for that, and this is the first year that they've done that. That's what the addition of, this is the first time they've actually had that agreement that they've had to sign.
Thank you. Questions?
You won't have any problem fulfilling that agreement? You've got plenty of staff to help with that?
Yes, we do. We have the two deputies in the future. I'd like to grow that to a third deputy position, for sure, with how busy we're getting and with search and rescue, but as of right now, we are able to make this agreement work. And then also, I want to note, there's no grant match. This is just, as long as we get those items that I mentioned done, then we'll get the performance base on it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the grant agreement with Idaho Parks and Recreation for the off-highway vehicle funds.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 21, board approval request. This is a proposal, Asphalt Pros ADA Compliance with Building and Grounds, and Director Fuller.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff Fuller for the record. This request is, for a request that Clerk Lock in the Elections Office brought to us for an unbudgeted project to bring the backstube, which is used as an exit at the Elections Office, where early voters will leave to bring that into ADA compliance. So it'll be reshaping the asphalt to create a slope that is ADA compliant with striping. It is, proposal is with Asphalt Pros for $5,200, and we propose using the five-year plan for that.
Questions?
Yeah, so five-year plan that was budgeted in FY '25 or five-year plan that's just sitting in fund balance?
Sitting in fund balance.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the Asphalt Pros proposal for the ADA compliance over at our Third Street Election Buildings using fund balance.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 22, board approval request. This is a repair work order for the gear seal elevator motor at the Federal Building, Building and Grounds, and Director Fuller again.
So we learned of a problem with the elevator at the Juvenile Justice Center. The worm gear seal is leaking and needs to be replaced, so we have a quote for TK Elevators for $10,711.16, and we propose using the restricted court funds because that qualifies for this expense to make that repair.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the repair work order for the gear seal in the elevator at Juvenile Justice Center and using restricted court funds.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 23, board approval request. This is a new fleet vehicle with trade in the assessor's office. I have Jason Ferris.
Jason Ferris, for the record, before you, you'll see your packet, I have three bids from three different auto manufacturers, and we're just looking to move forward with the pre-approved $40,000 budget for a new vehicle, in addition to trading in one of our aged-out vehicles, which bid number one is willing to give us actually more than what the trade-in value is worth, so it looks like that's going to be the best deal.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
Sorry, just a comment that in order to complete the trade-in, you have to come back with a resolution to remove it from the asset list.
The trade-in resolution?
Yes.
That should be in the, in the packet?
It's not listed on our agenda, and typically, if we're going to do a resolution, it's listed on our agenda.
Okay.
And I, it's not in our packet. So, not a big deal to bring it back next week.
Okay.
But we can still approve the transaction today.
Yeah, transaction.
Thank you very much.
Is that it?
Motion?
I move that we approve the new fleet vehicle purchase with trade.
Aye.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 24, Northern Lakes Fire District Annexation, Leggett, Bedwell, and the BCC, and we have Dave Ferguson.
Commissioners, this, as you, okay. As you stated, it's a request for annexation for Leggett and Bedwell, owners of these properties, into the Northern Lakes Fire Protection District. I reviewed the application, and the Board of Commissioners for the Fire District held a meeting and approved this annexation. It was published property, properly, and the two properties are adjacent to current annexed property, so it, these properties do meet the qualifications for annexation.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the Northern Lakes Fire District Annexation for Leggett and Bedwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is an executive session, so I'm going to go ahead and ask for public comment first. Is there anyone, anyone in the audience? No? Anyone online? No? Okay. Then I will take a motion to enter into executive session.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to IDO Code 2742061D.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Aye.